Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order the January 22nd, 2019 Seminole County Public Schools School Board meeting. I am honored this evening to both deliver the invocation and the pledge, and I thought yesterday while we were all celebrating a very important person, Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., it kind of reminded me to say that we have so many local heroes that really are carrying on his life's legacy in the work that they do in and out of the classrooms each and every day, and I think it's really important for us, even though it's no longer Monday, it's Tuesday. I wanted to pause to again reflect on such a phenomenal leader that we were so honored to have influenced this country in such a great way, and I thought the best way to do that is to share some of my personal favorite quotes that I know Dr. King is known by, and that's how I try to live my life. I know we all try to live our lives that way, and you absolutely certainly see it living out in all of our classrooms each and every day with the passion and compassion of all of our quality educators here in Seminole County Public Schools. So my first thought is this: "The function of education is to teach one to think intensively and to think critically. Intelligence plus character, that is, the goal of true education. Darkness cannot drive out darkness, only light can do that. Hate cannot drive out hate, only love can do that. The time is always right to do what is right. Our lives begin and end the day. We become silent about things that matter. I have decided to stick with love. Hate is too great a burden to bear." And finally, life's most persistent and urgent question is this: What are you doing for others? May we all join together and continue to serve others. Will you please rise and join me in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation in the free, open, indivisible, with liberty, and justice, and for all.
Thank you so much. Let the record reflect that all five school board members are in attendance in addition to our attorney and superintendent. At this point in time, I'd like to recognize our PTA representatives, Polly Dulucia, or Seminole County Council of PTAs and PTSAs in attendance. Thanks Polly for being here. Sandra Maldonado-Ross, Seminole Education Association President, thank you for being here. Mr. Bobby Aganina, Lake Howell High School, SCA Vice President, thank you for being here. Dr. Griffin, do we have any agenda modifications?
There are two, Madam Chair. The first is the addendum for good cause, as marked on our electronic agenda by a green flag named Addendum Item, and the second is an item I'm going to pull this evening. It's Item 4N Amendment 3 to the agreement with LSI, Learning Science International, LLC.
Thank you. School board members, do you have any items pulled for clarification, questions, or comments?
No ma'am.
Okay. I will be asking for board representation on 4P, Ms. Abby Sanchez, when we get to the time to take action on the consent agenda, and Mrs. Kraus, you've volunteered to be a backup if there is time conflict, so thank you both for doing that. Could I please ask for an approval of the agenda outline?
So moved.
There's a motion, motion second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Dr. Griffin, we have some presentations and recognitions.
Yes, we'll be starting with our SCPS Veteran of the Month.
Great.
Good evening, Dr. Griffin and board members. It's my pleasure tonight to recognize our Veteran of the Month, Mr. Robert Rizzo from Millennium Middle School. Mr. Rizzo?
Mr. Robert Rizzo joined the United States Air Force in September 1995 and completed his basic training at Lackland Air Force Base in San Antonio, Texas. Mr. Rizzo then went to teach, to tech school for aircrew life support training at Shepherd Air Force Base, which is located in Wichita Falls, Texas. He was then stationed at Spangdlem, easy for me to say, airbase in Germany where he worked on F-16s. He came back to the United States to Grand Forks Air Force Base in North Dakota and worked on KC-135s. During his time in the Air Force, Robert served, serviced the equipment pilots wore when they flew. This equipment included anti-gravity suits, oxygen masks, helmets, harnesses, parachutes, survival gear, and chemical defense gear. During his enlistment, he served in Turkey, Saudi Arabia, Kuwait, Sardinia, Spain, Iceland, and Belgium. After his initial enlistment, he served in the North Dakota and Pennsylvania Air National Guards for an additional four years. Mr. Rizzo is currently a 7th grade language arts instructor at Millennium Middle School. He has been teaching for 10 years. He began his teaching career in Gainesville after graduating from the University of Florida with his master's degree in English Education. Go Gators! He located to Seminole County to be closer to his family and has been teaching at Millennium for the past six years. Joining Robert tonight are his wife, Stacy, his son, Jamie, and his daughter, Charlotte. Thank you for your service, Robert, and congratulations on being selected as our Veteran of the Month, and also joining is Maggie Gunderson, principal.
Dr. Griffin, school board members, tonight we also would like to recognize all the staff that helped with our SCPS Hurricane Michael School Supply Drive, when we sent approximately 38 pallets up to the Panhandle to help after the aftermath of Hurricane Michael, and obviously there's a lot logistically to make that happen and to transport all that, as you all are aware of. So from facilities, we'll recognize a few folks, Kim Dove, Mark Burnstead, Dawn Deese, Michelle Elliott, Anne Grimie, Diane Henderson, and Kara Rosner come on up, and then also from our purchasing and distribution department, Cory Carter, Calvin Charlton, Steve Dennis, Lisa Galinas, Wilbert Gordon, Michael Gravier, Charlotte Holliday, Maurice Holloway, Vernon Law, Charles James Martin, Ernie Myers, Cynthia Morgan, Brittany Myers, Laura Reed, Miguel Tolentino, Bruce Washington, and Daniel Williams. Also, a big, huge thanks to Joe Rinaldi, Bill Kelly, and Cheryl Olson for also helping to coordinate all of those efforts.
Welcome, ladies, for our Focus on Achievement.
Good evening. My name is Ally Hilliard, and I'm the Coordinator of Secondary Reading and Curriculum. We'd first like to thank you for your purchase of Achieve 3000 for the 1819 school year. As you may be aware, Achieve 3000 is a differentiated reading support that has primarily been implemented in our intensive reading courses at the secondary level. While that support continues, this year, in an effort to meet Dr. Griffin's and Mr. Godro's call to action in providing additional support for fluent readers who may struggle with comprehension, we extended our integration of Achieve 3000 into our ELA 9 and 10 courses. To monitor students' lexile growth using Achieve 3000, average activity scores, and number of completed activities by school is reported to Cabinet each week. Tonight, we would like to spotlight this year's integration of Achieve 3000 into our ELA 9 and 10 courses. At a recent meeting with Achieve, they emphasized the need for their program to be easy to use, to complement the scope and sequence, and to never replace the teacher. In this vein, I'd like to introduce Lauren Hamilton, our secondary ELA specialist, to share how Achieve 3000 does seamlessly work to complement our current ELA scope and sequence. We're also pleased to have with us Ms. Lindsay Jackson, an ELA teacher from Hagerty, who will share with us just how this integration of Achieve 3000, coupled with standards-based instruction, leads to her student's success.
Teachers utilize the scope and sequence to first identify the focus standards of the quarter. The scope and sequence is designed to scaffold instruction so that students reach complexity of all three cluster standards before the end of the school year. Teachers then utilize the IP that contains both literary and informational standards-based lessons created by SCPS teachers. This is an exemplar that highlights the components of each lesson. In order to support the autonomy of the teacher, lessons are text-based but not text-specific, allowing for teacher choice, and also seamlessly supporting Achieve text into the ELA curriculum. As a testimony of how a high school ELA teacher is utilizing both Achieve 3000 and the IP in their classroom, Lindsay Jackson is going to share her instructional design.
Hi, and thank you for having me. First, I link Achieve 3000 articles, or an article depending on what we're doing, to the thematic concept of the unit in order to align the literary text to nonfiction. Then I identify which instructional framework lesson to use with the focus standard and instruct using a station-rotation model. The traditional station model has student groups working with grade-level texts before transitioning to the computer for lexile-level work. After completing lexile-level work, all students complete a formative assessment on the focus standard as an exit slip. Data chats are conducted with students approximately every four weeks regarding lexile growth and expectations for achievement and performance.
We would like to thank you for this opportunity. Through continued professional development, we are continuing our work with our teachers throughout the district to improve their implementation and to support students at both their independent and instructional levels. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any comments or questions, team?
No.
Thank you, ladies, for your leadership. Dr. Griffin, do you have a recommendation on the consent agenda, please?
My recommendation is that the consent agenda be approved as presented.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like, sign. Motion carries unanimously. Dr. Griffin, student disciplinary hearing dispositions, please.
Yes, Madam Chair, my recommendation is that the School Board of Seminole County approve the student disciplinary recommendations from December 17th, 2018.
So moved. Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like, sign. Motion carries unanimously. We've now reached the point of our agenda for public comment. I do have a few citizens who would like to address the board. If anyone else would like to share any comments, there are forms on the back table to fill out, and at this point in time, I'd like to ask Vice Chairman Almond to share our policies and public comment.
Thank you, Chairman. The public input segment of the meeting is provided for the purpose of permitting persons to present specific matters to the board for consideration and action, or referral to the superintendent and his staff. The public input segment of the meeting is not open to presentation of campaign issues by political candidates, student disciplinary actions, or pending employee disciplinary matters or pending litigation. Each individual member of the public is limited to three minutes, and a designated group representative may have up to six minutes. Thank you, Ms. Beaman, for condensing this for us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Almond. I'd like to first call Mr. Chris McLeod, and after Mr. McLeod, Polly Dulucia.
I feel a tad bit underdressed this evening, so my apologies to all those involved. Members of the school board, Dr. Griffin wanted to, first off, thank you on behalf of not only the parents, but also the over 500 Seminole County students at Galileo School for Gifted Learning for the decision to change and allow these students to participate in all countywide nonqualifying events. I would bring my daughters up because I know that they were involved in cross-country, and that was one of the events that was potentially being considered, but I feel it's in my due part, after speaking back in November, my concerns and worries and feelings moving forward that when the decision's made, I think in the positive, you deserve the recognition and thanks, and I won't take all the three minutes, but felt it was appropriate to come up and say thank you.
Thank you for taking the time to come and address us. We appreciate it. Ms. Polly Dulucia, and then Kimberly Banks, please.
Hello. My name is Polly Dulucia. My address is 108 Monterey Drive in Sanford. I am president of the Seminole County Council of PTAs and PTSAs, and I come before you to speak on behalf of our 16,464 members. I want to express our thanks to Seminole County Public Schools and to the Foundation for Seminole County Public Schools for collaborating with us to hold a coat collection for our students, and to express to the board members personal thanks as well as they have been supportive. As any central Florida parent knows, it is sometimes hard to get our little ones out of sandals and into jackets. They spend so much of their lives in shorts and t-shirts that even a simple long-sleeved sweatshirt is confining, and don't even get me started on the heavier jacket. Last year, my Luna was in VPK and responsible for dressing herself. Without fail, if the temperature dropped, she'd pick a sundress. This was in direct opposition to the hottest days in August when she wore long sleeves and leggings. It was a running joke with the preschool staff. They knew, however, that she was dressing inappropriately, and why, and that there was a jacket in her backpack. Unfortunately, not all the students shivering on our campuses are making personal statements. For a family with tight finances, buying heavier clothing that may be worn relatively few times before being outgrown is not a priority. My mom, a longtime teacher in Duval County, worked with students who would simply skip school when it got too cold. The ongoing coat collection has placed a donation box in each school for new and used coats, jackets, sweatshirts, sweaters, and long pants. Additionally, the foundation is accepting donations through families in need on the website. Donations can be brought to the schools through tomorrow, and then the schools will bring them on Thursday to Winter Springs High School. So further donations could be brought to Winter Springs High School at 6:00 PM on Thursday, January 24. We will have a final donation availability, which will be during the aviation day on Saturday. So we really want to encourage everyone to get out, to empty their closets, find their old jackets, and pass them on. And I want to remind everyone that those high schoolers are fully grown, so the need for jackets is not just for the little ones. We are accepting clothes from size 4 for our VPK students all the way up. I had a social worker tell me he had to get something in a 5X. So raid your husband's jacket, anything you can find to pass on warm clothes to our students, keep them in the classrooms, and keep the excellence going. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Kimberly Banks, please.
For having me. Hi, my name is Kimberly Banks. My daughter, Alyssa, is blind, and she's enrolled in a veto high school. My daughter started OHS during the 2016-27 school year. Very early, it became clear to me that the school was not prepared to meet her needs. I attempted to work with OHS staff and SCPS admin in multiple IEP meetings during Alyssa's first semester in high school. After OHS continually failed to provide Alyssa with basic materials, we agreed to mediation. A partial agreement was met, which the district did not comply with. The district admitted no fault. I agreed to a second mediation in the summer of 2017. The district did not comply with that mediation agreement and still admitted no fault. I continued to try and work with the district by documenting concerns about staff conduct and noncompliance with my daughter's IEP that interfered with Alyssa's education, sharing those issues with OHS and SCPS admin. During this time, Alyssa was failing or struggling in almost all of her academic classes. Our family was working with private tutors to help her catch up, and Alyssa began seeing a therapist to deal with the stress that she was under at school. We quickly noticed that Alyssa's academic problems predominantly revolved around access to materials. When she was provided with accessible materials from outside agencies, Alyssa did well. She scored competitively on her FSAs and EOCs even in classes she struggled in daily. For example, on one AP exam, she scored a 4 out of 5 but received a D in the class. Alyssa received inaccessible materials in that class almost every day. We have at least 20 boxes of inaccessible materials at home that the district provided to her from the fall of 2016 to 2018, and the district has admitted no fault. Last March, our family requested a due process hearing against the school district to finally resolve this matter. I have available to the board and Dr. Griffin multiple copies of the court order that came out of that request. I can provide them to you here. The ruling was fully favorable to my daughter. After two years of being told that we were wrong, of her being told that she wasn't really blind, or that she needed to try harder to see better, the court sided with her and us in that SCPS had not provided her with an appropriate or illegal education. In good faith, I sent Alyssa back to school, hoping that she would finally be provided with what she needed, but again, there were daily issues with materials being provided excessively and technology not working. This is the workbook that my daughter was given for Spanish this year. It's not emblé, it's not in large print, it's not, it's not in line with the IEP. Alyssa began having daily migraine headaches from straining to read material. She couldn't see. She had back pain from bending over her desk to try to get closer to work that was too small. Alyssa was reporting access issues to staff. Those issues were not resolved or documented, though in educational records request, through an educational records request, we found out that it was one teacher's belief that no further actions were needed when Alyssa reported inaccessibility because she accommodated Alyssa to the standard of the United States Constitution.
Mrs. Banks, I appreciate you sharing this information with us. I'll have our clerk be sure to share it, and Dr. Walsh, could I ask you to meet with Mrs. Banks and report back to all of us? Any further detail, I appreciate it. Thank you for coming tonight. Dr. Griffin, any unfinished new business or superintendent's report?
I just would like to point out, first of all, board members, thank you for your thorough review of the Excellence and Equity Report. Steph puts a lot of time into that, and that really is the data that defines our fiber as a district, and there's always a lot of things to celebrate, but there are always things to work on, and you brought up several things. I even asked Dr. Cody to, let's make this a little more formalized during Cabinet. I just think equity and excellence needs to continue to be on our radar all the time, but also for future generations, and this data is an important part of who we are, and you all had good questions and were very interested, and it took the time to go through it, and I know that makes Dr. Cody and the team, I know Kelly Thompson's team worked on it and a few others, but it's a lot of work, but it really defines who we are. So thank you.
Thank you. And moving on to board member comments, Vice Chairman Almond.
Okay, the first thing I want to report on, or I want to say thank you to Ashley Sanders for the mental health first aid professional development that she did for all of us. It was really intense and very much appreciated. It was good information to have. Community Alliance I serve on, we meet quarterly. It's really all the agencies, DJJ, and wraparound type services that support our youth who have been maybe in trouble a little bit. I tried to help them out. We updated, we're working on updating the bylaws, and the last time they were updated was when they were originally written in 2003. So Children's Cabinet had a presentation by Deveraux. They have a mobile mental health crisis unit, and they'll go to schools, they'll go to homes, they'll go wherever you need them to go. Their phones are manned 24 hours a day. It sounds like it's really working out very well, and they'll help students that have personal issues, or if a friend or a family member has an issue, they'll help them. And then, everything's related this month. System of Care had a sustainability meeting for their wraparound services and their five-year grant. It was a $4 million grant. It ends September of 2019, and all the members are confident that they'll continue to provide the services that are needed for our students with or without additional funding, although they're looking for additional funding sources. And that's my report.
Great. Thank you so much. And Member Pennick, please.
First off, I'd like to say Happy New Year to everyone, and happy birthday, Ms. Karen. Over the past several months, we have started meeting with Goodwill on a regular basis to start looking into more of a partnership on how we can use some of their services to recruit bus drivers, maintenance workers, food service workers. So we've had some really good movement in that area. We have a scheduled meeting coming up to do a tour of the Sanford Job Connection Center for all of the cabinets, so we can see what they do there, and start making some, closing some of the gap there of the open positions that we have. Many of us, all of us, except for those that were touring, senators attended the CFE ribbon-cutting at Lake Howell last week, and it was such a beautiful facility, such a great opportunity and a great partnership with CFE that I wish we could get them in all of the high schools. This next year, they did say that their focus was going to be on the colleges, but they will come back after that and work on putting more into the high schools. They are going through a name change and rebranding, and the finance person and me asked, that is not our responsibility to pay for the rebranding within our schools, so they will be paying for all of that. Their new name is called Additions Financials. So we will see those over the next couple of months coming out, changes. I've done many, many school tours and trips. This past weekend was the Fun Run at Midway. Over 176 kids ran. Grow was out there, and they did just such a wonderful, wonderful job. Tina and I got to participate right in Sanford, and today I just had the most wonderful experience with Dr. Walsh and her team visiting five or six of the different jet sites, and some of these kids and just learning about the great way that we're touching and changing and impacting these kids' lives. It was quite an emotional and fun, impressive morning. So thank you, Dr. Walsh.
Thank you so much. And Member Sanchez, please.
Along the line with CFE, that was great, seeing the second school in Seminole County with the branch opening up. Ribbon cutting ceremony was wonderful. A lot of people with, Ms. Pennick just mentioning, the name changing and the rebranding is because a lot of people think that you have to be an educator in order to work or to open up an account, which you don't. So anybody and everybody could bank at CFE. We had a great time touring the facility and seeing the students at work. I have been blessed with all my children going through the program at Lake Brantley, and just think it's a phenomenal program, and the financial aspect of it has been a great resource for my students, my own children, and it's great for all of them. With my committees, with the Business Advisory Board, we were, they're going to be doing a deep dive on school time, checking out different things with that. We discussed a little bit about... We discussed a little bit about some of the different activities that are going on in the schools and what they could do to help. And they're always looking for ways for everybody to help and communicate with them, so you're more than welcome to help with that. The Coalition Meeting, I know that Ms. Kraus and Dr. Calderon went with me there, and we had a briefing on the legislative update and discussed what we needed to do to make sure that we're all on the same page of things that we need and that we would like to see up in Tallahassee take place. And we also had a chance to go to the Dr. Martin Luther King Gala on Saturday night, Ms. Kraus and I did. And it was really neat to see all the different awards that some of our students were able to receive. So congratulations to the students that won the poster contests and the writing contests. And then the Health Department received the Community Service Award, and then the Outreach Rescue Mission also received an award, which I also actually had a chance to with the Three Two Seven Supper Club group last week, had an opportunity to help feed many of our families in need in Goldsboro. And they're always looking for more help or any businesses that would like to support or donate food or anything like that. So I think it'd be a great thing for all of us to do. And it was a cold night, and they provided all the kids with the blankets and stuff, and it's an emergency shelter, so we were, it's really important to make sure that we reach out to all these students that were, I was actually surprised to see how many students were actually going into the facility that didn't have a place to live. The Magnet Expo exhibit at Seminole, I'm sorry, at Sanford.
Seminole Town Center.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking. Seminole Town Center. We had an opportunity to go there, and thank you to all the wonderful Magnet programs, teachers, faculty, students, parents, and everybody that went to it, and for all their dedication. It went extremely well, and they had a great turnout. What else did I want to say? This weekend, there's so many things going on. I know we've been posting them all around, but don't forget Aviation Day is on Saturday, and that's a big hit with Millionaire over at the Sanford Airport. They have so many wonderful activities to do with the students and kids and see so many wonderful programs. And that is from, I believe it's nine until two.
Six.
Yes, okay. And then Dahl County Band, that's Saturday at Lake Mary High School from six thirty to eight thirty P.M. And then we have the World Language Festival at Seminole High School, and that's from eight till three. And then we have Elementary Cross Country Meet, and that's at Seminole State College from nine until ten thirty. And again, also thank you to the mental health counselors and Ashley and Dr. Walsh for everything you all are doing with that. The training was fabulous. And also, one more thing, the Great Start Program, if you haven't seen all the wonderful days and events that are coming up, please go onto the website, onto the foundation, or to our Great Start Program, and check out all the great dates of wonderful activities that we can do with our kids. Thank you.
Thank you. Believe it or not, there's even a few things left for me to comment on. First and most important, Happy Birthday, Mrs. Almond.
Yes.
We need to take time to celebrate you. Today, Dr. Griffin, myself, and Ms. Beaman spent most of the day honoring a legend in our community, a phenomenal leader, Dr. R.W. Murthy. His funeral was today, and it, this community is going to miss his leadership, his passion, his compassion, and his mentorship to our students, to our community. He brought grace to everything he did, and we were honored to represent this entire board. And you'll see the people that were there, many of them passed through our hallways in Seminole County at one time or another, and we, it stays like today. It makes you feel that we really are a family, because we are there for each other in good times and for bad. So my prayers and sympathies goes out to his family, but also the New World Life Center, their church family. Wanted to say thank you to the Sanford Chamber. Each month, they honor a student and teacher of the month, and this month it was Idowild Elementary. So it's always fun to celebrate our educators and wonderful students. I was also honored to be invited to speak to our retired educators in Seminole County. Many of our educators get together throughout the year at Patio Grill, but it's great that they stay active in education and lobby to do what's right for educators and students. And I gave them an update with a lot of things that were going on in the school, and I don't know, maybe some of them wanted to come out of retirement after they saw the exciting new programs we had. Dr. Griffin and I this morning met with Pastor Dwayne Mercer, who is leading up our Secure of Vito Schools Golf Tournament. They're raising funds to help us accelerate our safety investments at our schools in the of Vito area, and we left in your mailboxes an invitation to the golf tournament coming up on February first at one o'clock. So if there's any community members that want to donate goods to their auction or to come to dinner, the dinner ticket sponsorships are only twenty-five dollars, and also signage on the course is two hundred and fifty. And a hundred percent of those funds will be running through our Foundation for Seminole County Public Schools to go directly to our schools. So I want to thank them for their leadership and their time and talent that they're putting into this event. I serve on the zoo, as you know, and just a heads up, because many of us drive this road, Seventeen Ninety-two in front of the zoo is going to be going under construction for the next few years. Not only are they passing, extending the walk, the wonderful walk across the St. John's River, but they're trying to get cars to go slower because they're adding bike paths. So there'll be numerous turnabouts coming all the way down Seventeen Ninety-two, and one of them will be right at the entrance of the zoo. So they're going to have to take eminent domain or zoo signs, so we're trying to think of other kind of signage there. But there will be a lot of construction going on in that entire stretch on the riverwalk, both the pedestrian side and the street side. So it's funny, we see it every day when we do construction in the schools and build new schools, how the approvals you need to get, and the architects, and the engineers, and the construction need to work together, and that's going to be a big undertaking. So we're looking forward to that. This month, our Chambers Issue Committee with the Seminole Chamber had David Johnson as a guest speaker, and he talked of the impact with real estate and hopefully the continued increase in the values, but the impact in having the Beltway finally come to full circle, which there'll be a lot of construction trying to connect that missing link. And so it will affect our Sanford areas and the communities, so I'm sure we'll, we're very involved through Mr. Rinaldi's department. Shout out to our robotics teams at Seminole High School, who hosted a great tournament with many of our high schoolers there. Thank you, Polly, and your whole team with PTA. The Reflections Celebration at the History Museum was beautiful. Many of us got to attend the other Saturday. Dr. Griffin and I attended Mayor's and Managers this month, and believe it or not, it wasn't about the school district this time. We talked about cell towers coming in for 5G, correct? You know, just as many people don't realize how many legal documents and statute and rules that we have to follow in the school district. Now with the technology that used to be just 2G and then 3G, well, the towers are different for 5G and the placements that they're allowed to place on in common areas, they're trying to come up with some common wording between cities and counties and will keep you up to date. But at this point in time, it's not affecting the school district at all, so we got to listen. The Wellness Champion Meeting this month, our kickoff was phenomenal. Dr. Griffin and I got to address our wellness champs at all of our schools that are really passionate about making sure that our SCPS family members stay healthy, because we know the best teachers have the most impact when they're in their classroom, and we want everybody to stay healthy. So to that end, Cigna has really been a phenomenal partner, and I wanted to give a shout out to Cigna in that they donated to us ten water bottle filling stations. And thanks to the hard effort, all of our walking people on cabinet and the school board, the following schools are going to have a donation of a free water bottle filling station. Goldsboro Elementary, Lake Mary High School, Castleberry Elementary, Lyman High School, Crystal Lake Elementary School, Lawton Elementary School, Markham Woods Middle School, Stenstrom Elementary School, Idowild Elementary School, and Winter Springs Elementary School. So we do care about the health and wellness of all of our students and all of our staff, and hopefully that's just a small token and the beginning in the right direction for many to come. Another great community partner we have is Sertoma, which stands for Service to Mankind, and they meet monthly at Patio Grill, and they honor super students from five of our elementary schools each month. And it's a great breakfast meeting. The parents usually cry. I always cry, but what else is new? But some of these children have never been recognized in their lives, and they're really exceptional in every way, whether they're in fourth grade and the caretaker for their three younger siblings while their parents are at work, or they go above and beyond on the school campuses every day assisting the teachers. We have a lot to be proud of, and we have some great future leaders in our community. And anytime we can say bravo or congratulations, you know we're all in. I attended the Infinity Scholarship Event at the Sanford Civic Center. Many students were there, colleges from around the country. Our local college, Seminole State, was there, so that was good, to be able to answer a lot of questions about college. And a very heartfelt thank you to Senator Simmons and Representative Smith, who spent over half a day with us touring the aviation program, the manufacturing program, and SI-HI on Friday. They had some great questions. They promised their support in our legislative priorities for this session, and so we're really excited to work collaboratively with our friends in Tallahassee to hopefully be able to support our teachers and students on even a higher level. And I think that's it, unless you have anything else.
I think, Mrs. Kraus, you didn't get a chance to speak, did you?
I'm sorry.
No, it's okay.
There's nothing left.
Actually, actually, I have.
There is.
I do have a couple of things.
How did I go so fast?
That's okay. I was able to attend with Dr. Griffin the Lake House Student Advisory Forum. These kids are amazing. They are incredible. Very insightful, great ideas on safety, and it really warmed my heart there. You've got some incredible students. We learned a lot. I also attended the Wellness Advocate Training, and it's great to see how excited people are, and they'll carry the message to their schools. The Reflections Program, Polly, that team did an outstanding job. We have amazing talent in this community. I visited Hegarty High School, had a personal tour by the principal. They have an incredible modeling and simulation program. If you haven't had the chance yet to visit, you should. The teacher is just so passionate. I also attended the Community Leadership, which was the state of high schools, and the Martin Luther King Gala in Sanford. And I think that's it. I know Karen wants to go out to dinner maybe for her birthday, so we'll cut it short. Happy Birthday, Karen.
Mrs. Kraus, I am so sorry. I was looking at everybody wearing black that matched into the chairs. You were just such a shining star up there. Dr. Griffin, do you have anything else? Anything else, board members? Seeing none, this meeting stands adjourned. Thank you. And Happy Birthday.
Happy Birthday.